Call to order, the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting of Monday, May 20, 2019. I am please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I hope everybody had a nice weekend. Denise will call. Mr. Rist.
Mr. Henry, here. Mr. King, here. Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Brooke, here. Mrs. Smith.
Here. Okay. It has come to our attention that the City Center Authority has some appointments that are up in June. And so this being our last meeting, what's your pledge?
Well, we've got Kerry, Macho, Scott Alexander, and Rosa Selby on there now. And I know they've all three contacted me by wanting to stay on there. I make a motion, we reappoint all three. I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry, yes. Mr. King, yes. Ms. Reagan.
Yes. And when's the term start and end?
It'd be July first, the new term.
And when do they end?
June 30th.
Is that a yearly, John, or two?
No, it's a, I think it's a two-year.
Two-year.
I'll double check.
Okay. I don't know if they happen to be here or not. But we appreciate anybody that serves on any of our boards. Okay, we have approval minutes for them, May 6th.
So moved, second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King, yes. Mr. Henry, yes. Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you. Contracts and agreements, I believe we have Emily and Judge Dowling here for us, please.
Good morning. Kim Dowling, Judge, Circuit Court 2. So before I start on the bullet-resistant material, just a heads up on the Comcast internet issue out at the YOC in Juvenile Court. We've had some issues, we've been trying to work through those with Comcast. We currently have an issue where our Sofos virus protection is causing some glitches with Odyssey. So they're out there again today trying to fix it. We've had some problems with some of our staff not being able to access Odyssey. So we'll keep you posted on that, but just giving you a heads up. All right, so the materials that we sent to you have to do with the bullet-resistant material on the bench at Juvenile Court. If you've not been to that courtroom, the bench there is different than those set up in the Justice Center. So it's more kind of like what you have here, but straight, so a long panel. And sitting behind that bench is the judge in the center, and then the security officer on one end, and the court reporter on the other. The estimates that you have, though, are only to cover the midsection where the judge sits. And so when I talked to David Dickerson at the YOC last week, he advised me of that and said, basically, if you want the whole bench covered, then you just take the number that you have times three. You've got kind of option number one and option number two. Option number two being the one that would stop the rifle as opposed to the option number one, which was a .44 Magnum. So if you take those times three to cover the entire bench, option one is going to be $6,500 rounded. Option number two is going to be $9,200 rounded. Obviously, my preference would be that we go with the better quality, just in case. But we have two law enforcement officers on the commissioner, so you guys would be in a probably better position to make that judgment than I would. So I will leave that choice up to you. But those are the two options, and I'd like to get it done as quickly as we can.
I'll make a motion to approve option number two. I'll second it.
The new $9,200.
Add to $9,200.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry, yes. Mr. King, yes. Mr. Reagan.
Yes. So is there a contract for this, or?
I've given this.
I've got that.
I'll, I will check with David and have him talk to Emily about an actual contract or whatever paperwork that.
Okay.
Thanks, Judge.
Sure.
Yep, thank you.
And I believe that could come out of a project for maintenance courthouse.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
And Jim, on the Comcast problem.
We experienced two different things. First of all, the Comcast circuit that we purchased that are running from that Comcast is supposed to be 300 meg, coming down, and about 60 going back up. And we have not acquired that speed since we put it in. And we're supposed to be out there this weekend looking at the circuit to see why that circuit is not getting up to what we're supposed to be paying for. We also, like Judge Dowling said, we've had an issue with our Sofos firewall that we put in. That unit is, we had to call support to help them help us. And it was, for whatever reason, two to three people out there at the agency was not being able to use Odyssey. We worked with their support Friday. Waiting to hear back from support on whether that update and fix on that to resolve the issue. Majority of the people were working, first it's slow because of the internet circuit not being fast, but firewall issue is something that we had to work out with support to get the settings to set up correctly for Odyssey.
So you're kind of disappointed that they didn't have this. How long you been working on this issue?
Well, since we put the circuit in, we went with one piece of equipment to try to, seeing that really caused a lot of latency, but then come to find out the latency was probably caused because of the circuit wasn't running, it's potential. So we put another firewall in, which allows us to use the Comcast internet side of it rather than coming back down to the county building to use the internet as provided internally here. So that was supposed to help speed it up. Then after we investigated more, found out the Comcast circuit is not running like it should be.
So you have faith that it will eventually be up and running?
Somewhat, hopefully, yes. Until Comcast, you get that circuit up to where it's supposed to be and maintain it, then I've got some reservations on it.
So you have Plan B, just in case.
Yeah, Plan B, right now, would be to fall back to the wireless point-to-point that we're reusing. We had, you know, very few issues other than maybe some slowness on it. But that would be the solution that we'd fall back to if this doesn't get resolved here by tomorrow.
Okay.
Keep us posted, please.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, now we have community corrections with a request.
Good morning. Jane Miranda from Community Corrections. My first request is to have permission to donate our client's community service van to Prairie Creek Reservoir once our new transport van comes in. It needs approximately $6,000 to $7,000 worth of work. And Prairie Creek is aware of this and is in need of a van, and had reached out to us about obtaining that van once we got our new one. I have a hard time having them bid and pay money for it and then turn around and say the amount of money that it's worth. But we did reach out to it, the ownership, and it's approximately worth $6,500 in the condition that it's in.
But they're going to do it in-house?
And that's about how much work it needs to have it be a safe transport van.
What are they going to do with it? Do you have any idea?
They are using it just to help around there. They also utilize our community service crews, so they would help transport back and forth our workers that go out there to help them. It not only helped us out, but it also helps them. They said they were in need of a van, so.
Okay. John, you think we can motion on that, or?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we donate the Community Corrections van to Prairie Creek. I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King, yes. Mr. Henry, yes. Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Okay, that's one problem solved, and then you're next.
The next one, it is time for the jail release program contract. It was suggested that we go ahead and move that to a calendar year, since the DOC and Community Corrections will now be on a calendar year. We have also changed our monitoring company, and so this contract reflects their terminology that is used instead of the previous company. It does not change the pricing. I just did two different ones, one to finish out this year, and then I also did an 18-month. If you wanted to go ahead and do an 18-month, or we can come back in December and revisit it for 2020.
You have two options in front of you. They're the same contract. The only difference, and Jane pointed this out to me, is the term. One ends in December 20, and one ends in December 2019. So that's your option.
Save her time coming back.
I make a motion, we do the 18-month. I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry, yes. Mr. King, yes. Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Jane, while you're up there, the sundry port, I think you had 219 of our clients that you're taking care of.
Yes.
So we appreciate all the good work that you're doing over there.
Thank you.
How long you been on the job now, this?
I was director since November of last year.
You had your anniversary. Appreciate all your good work over there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Indiana Finance and Authority Supplement.
This is a contract for the CR3, or I think it's Phase 2.
Correct.
Phase 2 analysis for the CR3 tire facility. They found, Phase 1 found some issues, so you automatically move it to Phase 2.
Yes, Mr. Bookhouse.
Brad's out in Mill Walders, Mill Working Company Economic Development. Yeah, this is from the Indiana Finance Authority to go to Phase 2. As you know, we've been working on the 2501 Westmouth Pleasant, old CR3 tire plant. This will help us get to the no further action letter so that we can put that property back on the tax roll.
Yeah, and $41,000.
This, yeah, it's, overall, it comes to is right at $41,000.
We don't have to match it or anything?
No.
No.
Nothing to the county. This all comes from my idea.
Appreciate your good work on that.
I'll make a motion, we approve the Indiana Finance Authority Supplement.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King, yes. Mr. Henry, yes. Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinance, second reading, 2019-012.
Make a motion to approve. I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry, yes. Mr. King, yes. Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you. Resolution 2019-002A.
This is an amendment to a resolution that was adopted, I think, back in February by the commissioners concerning the sheriff's contract. The sheriff has been in negotiation with the council to arrive at a final contract. I believe that we have a, I've got a version that was sent to me from the council's attorney of an approved contract with the sheriff. I see the sheriff in the back. That contract, I presume, is acceptable to you?
Tony Skinner, Delaware County Sheriff. Yeah, I don't have any issues with that contract.
So the formal process is both the council and the commissioners must adopt the contract via resolution. You have both the contract and a resolution, and so you adopt the resolution, then the council adopts a resolution, the contract goes to the full force of effect. I made a retroactive back to January 1.
I'll make a motion to we approve Resolution Number 2019-002A. I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King, yes. Mr. Henry, yes. Ms. Reagan.
Yes. While the sheriff was up there, I was going to congratulate him on hosting the Vice President of the United States here, Delaware County, for about five hours.
It was a great weekend. Our deputies had a great time in counterparting with the Secret Service for the whole week, so very proud of how they acted and how the whole thing went down. I don't know if I have another chance to be up here, so I just wanted to tell you also that last week, the jail had their official jail visit from the state, so they did, that this year's jail report should be coming out soon. So Mr. Sweb was pleased. He said, you know, we're doing pretty much the best that we can be doing with what we have to work with. There were a few minor issues, but there always are, so.
So overall, he was impressed?
Yeah, they were.
Bunk beds and all?
Yep. So when that, when that official report comes through, we'll make sure and get it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Department heads of veterans, Mr. Nate Jones is here.
Nate Jones, Delaware County Veterans Affairs. I just wanted to take a moment and talk about a few things that's been happening here with the VA office, and also recognize some very important folks in the community. First and foremost, obviously, I want to recognize our guys for how hard they've worked here over the last probably six to nine months. So I appreciate each and every one of you for what you guys have done here recently. I want to talk a little bit about the vehicle that we recently got, and some of the things that we've been able to do with that vehicle. We've done a lot of medical, not important or emergency medical, transportations, but veterans without cars, without any type of transportation, or were unable to get to a hospital or doctor's appointment. We've been able to transport a lot of those guys. Matter of fact, just to kind of give you an insight, we've already put 4,000 miles on that brand-new vehicle, so that just kind of should tell you a little bit about how much traveling we're really doing with that vehicle. I also want to talk about some initiatives that are moving forward. We have an opportunity here over the next year to potentially get a PTSD service dog for our office, and I will consult you guys at a little bit later of a date to talk about that when it comes time. But we're in the process of working with a company that would be willing to potentially offer up a dog for our office while veterans are in there receiving services to help them keep calm, do whatever it is that they need during that process. And so at a future date, we'll kind of go over some of that stuff. The last thing I want to talk about is the Fraternal Order of the Eagles. Last year, the Fraternal Order of Eagles donated approximately $5,000 to the VA office for purposes like vehicle transportation, maybe it's bills that need to be paid for veterans that are struggling, so on and so forth. And this year, we've been fortunate enough, matter of fact, Bill Marshall, will you guys come on up here for a second, if you don't mind? We've been fortunate enough that they have decided to do the same exact thing, and then yesterday, our whole entire office went to the Fraternal Order of the Eagles, and this fine young group put on an amazing show for those guys, and also donated quite a bit of money. So just to give you some insight, they were able to raise $512 in cash yesterday, and also donated an additional $10,000 to our office. And so I just think it's important that we recognize those that continue to help our veterans here locally every day. So if we could give them a round of applause. So before, because I want you guys to say something if you'd like, but before I do that, I just want to let you know that some of the things that this money will be going towards is, once again, some of the transportation for some of these veterans that need to receive medical care throughout the county. Also, last year, we helped veterans stay unhomeless. We helped them stay, keep power on in their house. We helped them keep their houses heated with gas. We were able to help out 14 different veterans last year with children for Christmas presents. And so we look forward this year to doing the same exact thing, and we will definitely make sure that we use this money very wisely, and we sincerely appreciate it from the bottom of our hearts. So thank you. If you guys would like to say a little something.
Yeah. Tell them to make sure to face that camera.
Yes. You guys want to hop over there? Yep, Bill?
I'm a proud Eagle, and that's our motto, people helping people. And what better organization to help but our veterans?
Right.
I ain't going to say I helped. Well, I'll get myself together again. But I want to thank my wife. She wanted to put this program together, and she asked me to go to the floor and ask for $5,000. But I went to the floor and I asked for $10,000. She about fell over. But hopefully, next year, we give more. But I appreciate them recognizing us. We give the sheriff 20, oh, I mean, sorry, we give the mayor last year $20,000. We never seen him pick up a check. We never seen anything from the mayor. And that, and these people there, they recognize us, and I appreciate that.
Well, we do appreciate and recognize you. So Nate, you want to bring them up for a presentation?
One more thing.
Sure.
Next year, the program's still set every year in May, May the 17th to 2020 at 4:00.
Yeah, let us know.
Just real quick, before we move on, the only thing I would ask is, when you guys are thinking about some of the organizations that you may want to join, some of the things you may want to do, it doesn't take much to join this organization. It's very inexpensive. And so if anybody can help these guys out, I would greatly appreciate it. So be sure to spread that out to your family, relatives. If they like to go out and play pool or anything else that they like to do, this is a great organization, great facility, very hospitable, and very nice people around there. So we sincerely, yeah, great food. We go there and eat breakfast or lunch every once in a while, and so we sincerely appreciate it, and, yes. Nate, could you come up here, please?
Yeah, you can read it over there.
Go ahead and read that.
Thank you.
Dean?
Yeah.
So they also have pool tournaments. I don't know if anybody else is interested.
And it also has a reminisce band show up.
Yes.
Yes.
So today, what we want to do is, we want to give you a certificate of appreciation. This certificate is proudly presented to the Eagles Lodge 231 in recognition of your time and consistent devotion to our citizens of Delaware County. We greatly appreciate your generous donation to the Veterans Affairs Office. Signed, all three commissioners, Steve Craig Craft, the county auditor, and I'm getting ready to sign it myself. So thank you guys very much. Please hand me the card.
When I went on the floor and asked for that $10,000, everyone voted yay for 100%. Everybody in there voted for me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Boy, that's going to be hard to top.
Well, thank you guys, thank you guys for providing the Veterans Administration with that donation, and thanks to all you guys up, setting up front here, that you guys are doing all that work. The commissioners greatly appreciate it, so thank you.
We are known as a community that has always cared, but our veterans stepped up, and we appreciate all of your work. Led by Nate. Okay, anybody else? Mr. Rogers?
Good morning, commissioners. Jason Rogers, Delaware County Emergency Management Director. I just want to touch on the multiple shootings that happened just outside Ball State campus over the weekend, and just give you a little update and report. Police found several victims at the scene. Three of them had suffered life-threatening injuries, meaning critical condition. Two shooting victims had fled to Ball Hospital on their own in personally-owned vehicles. We had three critical patients with multiple gunshot wounds, and these are the notable successes that I'd like to talk on. We responded four units with the on-duty supervisor to that scene. Two of our units arrived simultaneously with the first responders, with our other two just arriving minutes later. All critical patients were transported within 10 minutes after our arrival, which is always a goal of ours. If anybody that listens to the radio, you can hear the dispatchers give us 10 minutes on-scene times, and that is to help us gauge where we're at in patient treatments. But we met that goal. All critical patients were treated with advanced life support. Four paramedics were there, along with the EMTs from our staff, advanced EMTs from our staff, as well. The paramedics stayed in the emergency room to help IUVMH staff with patient stabilization because they received so many critical patients at one time. And I think that that's notable, that everybody's still alive. And so that's, that's a, that's a community effort between the first responders that drove our guys to the hospital, which allowed our paramedics to work on them in the back of the trucks, the advanced life support protocols that they use, and the things that they do, and I could go on and on and on and get technical about it, but basically, they brought the emergency room to the scene. It was overwhelming. They had 100 people going in all kinds of different directions and multiple shooting victims, and our guys handled that entire, what I would call a mass casualty incident with professionalism, with use of their training, and everybody had a significant outcome as far as EMS is concerned, and that's getting them to the hospital while they're still alive. One thing that I did want to note is, our response times were really good. It was almost 1:00 in the morning, and there's been a big deal made about strategic station locations, and I want to note that it doesn't help any response times with strategic locations if the units are already out serving the community. And that's exactly what ours do every single day. You know, we've got, there's, you know, 20,000 EMS responses that we do, and we're out in this community, in the city, probably 80 or 90% of the time. So we were able to get the appropriate care to the appropriate amount of victims and get them to the hospital to a definitive care in a really, really quick fashion. So kudos to that shift that was working. And I want to note that this is the start of EMS Week, and four of those guys that worked all night long, Saturday night, or I'm sorry, Friday night, Saturday went to Indianapolis to participate in the Run With Shears. So not only did they work all night, were up all night, they went to Indianapolis to represent Delaware County EMS in the state's fundraising efforts to put an EMS memorial up, along with the police fire memorial that's at the Capitol. So just wanted to give you that update and say thanks to all the EMS crews that went through that. And again, it just, it's a testament to the preparation that we've put in place and that you all have supported over the years, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank them for us. We will.
Paul's sitting over there. I'm sure your place was jumping, too.
They were busy also.
Appreciate your good stuff.
Mr. President, go over some monitor business, please.
Sure.
Excuse me. Recently, as you know, we had the Commissioner deep sale, and as far as we're concerned, it was a very good success, and we appreciate all of the support that the commissioners give us in doing this, and, of course, Mr. Brooke and Mr. Redd, so the attorney's office, provided a lot of service, but this whole thing wouldn't have been possible, really, if it hadn't been for the hard work, which started back in October. And if you would, please, Janet Kessler, who recently retired, Janet, stand up, please. And she, she's one of the mainstays that all of you know about, and so that's some big shoes to fill. And so, and we hired Heather, who was her part-time assistant. Heather, Heather Ruddock, please stand up. And so she stepped in after she, she worked with Janet, trying to get all that knowledge and things, and so now her assistant is Josh Talby, if you would, stand up, please. All of them have put in a great deal of work, and we were really blessed when Janet just come back to work part-time to help us, and she worked with Mr. Brooke and Mr. Redd about getting a lot of these things done. Our next projected sale is going to be August the 13th, and Mr. Brooke and Mr. Redd is already looking about streamlining that, and with the judge and things, Judge Cannon, and having a good process. I would like to, also, I wish he could have been here today. The county treasurer worked really well with us in doing this. Carol, he put in a lot, and his staff helped us quite a bit, so it was a real smooth situation. We, we took in over $416,000, I should say, in sales. Of that, we have collected $384,637. We've got a balance of about 31.5 left. Prior to the sale, we redeemed 67 parcels, so we had 321 parcels. to the sale, we redeemed 67 parcels, so we had 321 parcels in the sale and 162 of them sold. And we got registered bidders now, and there's 207 bidders that we actually have that we can reach out to for the next sale, which a lot of them are anxious because they seen the total list of 500 prior to our sale, and some of them, we didn't get the legal work done because of all the complications that we had with some things. And so we have, they're ready for the next round, and so we're working on the details of that. Mr. Brook's going to be helping us get our schedule set up. But tentatively, we're wanting to do August the 13th, but I cannot express too much to the staff, Ms. Kessler, Ms. Ruddick, and Mr. Talby, about all the hard work they put in, because it's just a lot of tedious work. And then, of course, all the legal work that was done by Mr. Brook and Mr. Ritz. So it made, we've a lot more successful than some we thought we would be, particularly monetarily. But we have a lot more to go on this, and we think this is going to get a lot of things back on the tax rolls. Thank you.
And we do want to thank Judge Cannon, that he makes sure, he made sure that they did have good receipt. And so it was a great team effort, and we have to thank you.
Charlie, thanks to you and Steve also. You guys did a great job. Appreciate you.
They did. Thanks. Anybody else? Okay, we have payments of claims, $2,37,842.83.
Tomo, second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes. Now it's time for the public. We have any public out there that would like to discuss anything? If not, I have a motion, please.
Motion to recess.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes. Thank you very much.